Recording in progress. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. We're so thrilled that everyone has come this evening and joined us in the council chambers. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here tonight for a very exciting and fun and wonderful city council meeting. So this is December 8th, and this is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. We're getting started at 6:08 PM. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Wright.
Present.
Councilmember Espinoza.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bowles.
Here.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Present. All right. Thank you. I'll read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatush Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatush Aloni peoples. And I will lead the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have some business this evening. We have our consent calendar, and I would like to know if any council members would like to pull anything from that consent calendar. I do have one thing I would like to request of staff.
And Mayor Beckmeyer, I do have something I want to say about item number six.
Okay. Item number six. Right. Okay. Can I do my question? Let me see. About item eight first, or do you want to do your update?
It's an amendment to a consent calendar item, so why don't I start with that?
Yeah, you do that because...
Then it can be included.
Okay. That sounds good.
Yeah. So for item number six, there's an amendment, and this is the item of revisions to the form of salary schedule for the city manager position. And the amendment is to replace the attachments on packet pages 100 to 102 with the amended versions distributed at the meeting with copies for the public available in the agenda binder at the back of the room. For item number six, the updated attachments are being supplemented to clarify that the city manager position in the salary schedule will be placed on the unrepresented management salary schedule, and the salary schedules in these updated attachments reflect the corrected compensation range accordingly.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I didn't hear anyone wish to pull any items. I did want some comment on item eight, but let's go ahead and do public comment first. Is that all right with you, council? All right. So with regard to public comment for items on the consent calendar, people wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Please make sure you're staying focused on consent calendar. And I'm looking at these cards I have, and I don't see... Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay. Ed Ochi.
Hello. Good evening.
Evening, council members, city staff. My name is Ed Ochi. I'm speaking as the resident of Pacifica, not affiliated with any group or organization. I'm speaking to... I'm concerned about consent calendar item 11, which is the Pacifica Tourism Marketing District and an award of a contract. And I want to make it clear, I have no objection to either the contract, proposed contract awardee, or the contract itself. I am concerned, however, about in the concept of good government. What you're looking at right now is a item, a contract, with a preliminary scope of work that the council motion actually reads that it's a preliminary scope of work, which may be refined prior to the full execution of the contract. So you're looking at something that's not a complete document yet. And since this is the only public review point, that's of concern, that you're looking at something preliminary that isn't going to be further reviewed. I'm not sure if that comprises good government or not. The other part of that is when you look at that contract, it's a short contract. It's a one-year with up to two years of renewal on that. The reporting requirements for that is very vague, that it says that quarterly reports will be provided to representative of the Tourism Marketing District, meaning the representative from the hotel. Doesn't say anything about any kind of information flowing back to council. Additionally, it says that an annual comprehensive report will be prepared. On a one-year contract, you're going to wait one year for a comprehensive review? It would seem that when you're dealing with a new entity, you would want to have intermediary review points, I would suggest, quarterly. They do not need to be done as a whole public item. You can do it as a consent calendar item. But I think you need, in the interest of daylighting, get the staff out in front of the public. So I don't know if you need to remove this item from the consent calendar for discussion, or if you want to delay that until the scope of work is completed. I'd like you to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And in reviewing the cards I have, there are no other cards for consent. Does anyone wish to speak on a consent item? Not seeing any nobodies on the phone, according to our assistant city clerk. Then I'll close public comment and bring it back. Let's answer a question that I have on that last public comment there. City manager and maybe assistant city manager Carter, is there time urgency on this item number 11 on our consent tonight?
I will ask assistant city manager Carter to come up to add to this. We've been working with SF Peninsula and with the Pacifica Tourism and Marketing District representatives to get this contract going for months. The effective date of the contract is contingent on revisions that will happen to the Visit Pacifica website per the SF Peninsula's needs. And so the... Ms. Carter should speak to the urgency of it tonight. But to address the comments from the public, this is between the Pacifica Tourism and Marketing District and SF Peninsula. Right now, the city is sort of just facilitating this arrangement, and Ms. Carter can elaborate about that.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I think city manager has essentially answered the question. So given the holidays and the work that has been already in place for several months, and we don't want to delay this process any longer, but if the council wants to see the full executed agreement, we can definitely do that. But again, it would delay the process even more, because we would have to... We can't start the revamp of the website completely unless we have a direction to go this direction.
So you can't start the revamp of the website unless this item is approved as it is presently before us tonight?
Well, these items are related, because the revamp of the website is requested by SF Peninsula to increase capabilities of the website, so they can do the scope of work that is before you today.
But those updates have not been done yet?
They're not completed yet, yes.
Right. And so in a way, if I'm understanding, that's kind of a precursor to this contract being able to be executed. Correct?
Correct. And another thing I want to mention to address the public comment. So the annual report is actually requirement under 94 law. So regardless how long the contract is, the requirement is to produce the annual report. So that report will be prepared closer to the end of this one-year term. And again, assuming that there are so many uncertainties right now with the assessments, with the revenues, and how things are going to be going with the PTMD district. But either way, so once the district, once the contract for nonprofit is in place, the work plan will be developed, and the annual report will be produced, even on the one-year term.
Could you elaborate, please, for the public on the statement that Mr. Woodhouse made about how this contract isn't really a contract with the city, per se? It's a contract between...
Correct.
...the Business Improvement District and the entity providing service?
Yes. Earlier last year, the council formed the Business Improvement District with all lodging establishments. So the revenues for the district are being assessed by the hotels. Well, the current assessment rate is 0.5% of the gross rents. So the city is holding this assessment in our separate fund right now. But the spending authority over the funds is actually within PTMD board members. So all seven hotels within the City of Pacifica. So once the nonprofit is selected, which is a requirement under the new district law, this funds will be remitted to the nonprofit for the PTMD board to evaluate how the funds will be spent on the work plan.
So any expenditures that need to happen right now are not from those funds? They're from any pre-existing funds? Is that accurate?
Well, currently, the city is holding the assessment in the separate fund.
But what if there needed to be an expenditure right now? Could they be expended, or no?
They could be expended with the authority of the PTMD. And there were some expenditures related to marketing advertisements in the past that were approved.
Or maybe like website preparation?
Yeah, and that too.
To be ready for executing the...
Exactly, yes.
Okay. I think my questions are answered. Does our Economic Development Committee representative have any question?
Actually, I think it was the work that we did together with BID and the former. Was it called the BID, right? It took a really long time to get to this point, a really long time. And I appreciate you, Ed. Thank you so much for your comment, and I appreciate all of your questions. And I also know that it's been years in the making, and so I think it should go forward.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's the only question. Any others? I have a light on, but it's not on our name board. It's number six.
I pushed it here. I thought it was...
Okay. I guess it's you. There's also number four. You're number four and you're number six.
Well, there you go.
I think you're number 10, therefore. Okay.
I'll take all the numbers.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask assistant city manager Carter if maybe when the final contract is finalized, perhaps that could come on consent, so that it's public for everyone to see.
We can do that if the council requests that. Or, well, I also want to point out that all city contracts are public record. So if any member of the public wants to see the contract that is executed, it's definitely part of...
It might be helpful to just put it in a future agenda, so that I'll have to ask you, if you don't mind. And then to the point about, yeah, this being a one-year contract and a reporting in one year, is it possible to ask, like, at 10 months or so, so that, you know, just if there are any other issues, those could maybe be resolved, you know, before the end of the year without extending the contract another year? Just as you're finalizing the contract, maybe instead of reporting in a year, reporting in 10 months? This is my request.
Okay. So the timing of the report, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely work with SF Peninsula on the timing.
Okay.
Well, with the questions that were submitted before tonight's meeting, my understanding from the answer is that once the PTMD is fully established and the managing nonprofit is operating, the council may request an update on the district's activities, marketing efforts, and annual report. So that's an update. That's not the annual report, right? So in other words, we could have an interim update?
You could. I mean, if you want to receive the update, we definitely can work with the district and the SF Peninsula, the service provider.
To councilmember Beer's point, this has been years in the making. It was confusing. We had six-month lapses between updates, so it's almost like we had to re-educate everybody. And for transparency's sake, I think it'd be very informative and helpful for all of us, the council, the community, and everyone, to have that interim update and to have that more frequent information, especially as this is getting launched. I think the work has been excellent. I think we've come to a good point, and I fondly recall, but it's been a while, the work we did on that. So I would love to just see the care and feeding of this new relationship, have a little bit more, you know, opportunity for the community to know what's going on with that.
And are you suggesting quarterly or semi-annually?
Quarterly sounds good to me.
Well, if I may suggest, so once we have the contract in place and we launch this new work plan with the SF Peninsula, so maybe we can agendize this item to share some activities that will be in...
Great idea.
Yeah, in progress.
Like that. And so I wrote a note on my paper here, timing of that request would, you know, once it's up and running, what does that mean? Is it mid-year? Is it June? Is it, you know, I would say as soon as possible, just to give us a good overview of what's going to occur.
Yeah. So I'll have to work with SF Peninsula on this to see what the right timing is. I don't want to speak for them, but we will work through the agenda management.
Okay, very good.
And it would be nice to meet them, too.
And Mayor Beckmeyer, I just want to be super clear, also, in this process and in bringing updates to council center. This is the PTMD, the Pacifica Management District, and the work, they're driving the decisions about the scope of work and what they need done for the hotels with SF Peninsula, not the city.
Understood.
Okay, yeah.
So after they figure that out, we want to have a report.
Yeah.
Because we all want to know, especially us.
And Madam Mayor, if I could clarify, Vice Mayor Bowles asked that the contract be brought back after it's executed. So the council would go forward with item 11 tonight, and then staff could bring back that contract after it's fully executed. But there's nothing to... There wouldn't be anything for the council to do with that contract. It would just be an informational...
Information item.
So it might be better if we could put it online somewhere, or like Assistant City Manager Carter mentioned, it is available to the public if they want to make a public records request, but we could also make it available online. And so that way, it wouldn't have to, you know, be brought back for nothing, no action at the council.
Is that okay?
It's okay, as long as you let us know when and where it is, yeah, so we can help get the word out.
Great. Now, with regard to item eight, and I'm going to ask you something, and I'm making a cardinal mistake right here. I'm asking you something that I didn't ask you before the meeting. Don't ever do that. So I would love it if it were possible, City Clerk Coffee, to, on item eight, bring the colored attachments that you sent to the council prior to the meeting. Is it possible for us to show those on our screen? I realize there were several images on one document, not one image per document, so it may not translate well, but I would love to just at least give the public a chance to look at it and understand what they're looking for when they want to go find it themselves later, because they're so excited.
Can you let the public know what the item is?
Oh, yeah.
They might not have the agenda in front of them.
Because you know, they didn't memorize it, really. Gosh, really? This is awarding construction contracts for playground equipment improvement projects. This has been an ongoing process for some time. We had to rebid the project because all the bids came in too high. We were trying to do four parks. The way the bids came in, it was, we were probably only going to have the money to do three. We rebid it with three, but with the hope that we would have enough money to do four, and we have four. And I want you to see these renderings, because it is so exciting. Is that a possibility, or am I just getting people all excited about something they can't have?
Give me just a moment, and I can bring them up.
So I didn't print those items, so I would have to go to my very thick packet and welcome any other council member jumping into state or staff member to state the exact parks. Councilmember Espinoza, I think you know where a couple of them are.
Of course.
Yes, please go ahead.
Sky Ridge is on top of the hill by 35 and near to Manor, intersection of 35 and Manor. And Imperial is on Hickey, but I forgot the street that goes by.
Imperial.
Well, it is Imperial, but from Hickey, how do you get there? There is one street, I think it's Parkview crosses. I'm not sure if Parkview crosses Hickey, and then you had to make a right turn on Imperial.
So those are two, and?
The other, Brighton, a little mini park here, and Sharp Park, and Marvella.
Marvella Park. Oh, yay, City Clerk Coffee. Okay, here we have Brighton Park. You know, it's that long and skinny one, if you know where Brighton is. And this park only got created in recent memory, anyway, as I recall. But it's due for a revamp, and all of these are going to be such improvements and so great. So that's another view. So exciting. Imperial Park. Look at all that equipment. It's so great. I'm so happy. Marvella, the little kind of, I don't know if you call it a pocket park, where Marvella Circle is in Lower Lindemar. I mean, the renderings are great, because they make it look so huge. It's really not that huge. Now, Sky Ridge is pretty big, actually, because of the trees and the expanse of land around it. The park itself is a little bit smaller, but what a thrill. And I just wanted to share it. I wanted to make sure everyone's aware, and that is on consent. But, you know, we haven't voted and everything, so I guess we should probably do that. Thank you very much, City Clerk Coffee. So with that, I am ready for a motion. a motion.
I move we approve the consent calendar with the revisions and the new attachments, 6A to item, which item was that?
Six.
Six.
Oh, item six.
Six, y'all, second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And with the motion to approve the consent calendar with item number six, as amended, made by Vice Mayor Bowles and seconded by Councilmember Beer, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right, for items not on the posted agenda this evening, I have one, two, three, four cards. I'll just read off all the four names again. It will be a three-minute public comment on any item not on tonight's agenda. That's within the scope of the jurisdiction of the City of Pacifica. So my people are Ron Makele, Suzanne Moore, Cindy Abbott, and Anita Reese. And we'll start with Ron.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, staff, everybody. Great to be here in this wonderful, renewed chamber again. I tell you, every time I come here, it's a really good feeling. And I'm really, I want to thank you all for improving the city so well as you've done. Every time I seem to drive in the city, it seems like there's a new street being paved, you know. So I really appreciate it, the new civic center. One thing I wanted to bring to mind, though, you know, the last earthquake we had in Pacifica, I think the epicenter was up there in Imperial Park, if I'm not mistaken. I thought I'd bring that to your attention anyway. One thing I'm here, though, is I'd like to bring to your attention, and some people in the audience might agree, the music that you play on the breaks, I think, is kind of a cure for insomnia. It's just, I don't know if you heard it or not, but I think maybe the Beach Boys or something. But any rate, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know, I think I talked to the city manager about it once in a while ago, and I've talked to Mayor Pro Tem Bowles. Look, congratulations tonight for you. At any rate, if you get a chance, listen to it. I don't know, maybe it's just me. I don't know if you need to appoint a task force to decide on that.
I don't know.
I just thought I'd bring that to your attention, and it's great to see everybody. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Suzanne, Suzanne Moore, Cindy Abbott, Anita Reese.
Suzanne Moore, sitting Board Member of the Pacifica Resource Center, and Anita's coming, too, so I'm not sure if we're going to be repeating ourselves, but I am speaking on behalf of the PRC this evening. Happy holidays, everyone. The PRC is grateful for your Thanksgiving community support. With your help, 200 families and 630 individuals were able to celebrate a Thanksgiving dinner. The PRC is now in the process of their annual Holiday Joy gift event, and it is the goal to provide gifts to 200 Pacifican children this year. Sponsors may bring wrapped gifts to the main office by December 11th. There is still the opportunity to participate in other ways. Last-minute gift shoppers can provide gifts for those who sign up late. And so if you're blessed with holiday cheer, call the PRC at 650-738-7470 and ask to be a last-minute gift shopper. Gift cards are also appreciated, and we suggest increments of $50 with Visa, Safeway, or Target being the most flexible sources. Help if you can. Please consider a year-end gift to the PRC. Your contribution this year will be matched up to $100,000 by a local anonymous donor. This year, we've seen the community step forward most generously to help neighbors keep food on the table when SNAP and WIC funding was threatened. In 2025, the PRC experienced 172% increase in services provided. Needs will likely grow in 2026, and federal funding for social service programs is reduced. Your donation can help keep food on the table and roofs over the heads of our neighbors. We are truly better when we work together. New Year is just a month away, and the PRC's tax service kickoff starts on Saturday, January 31st. To honorable council members, our city staff, and to all our neighbors, the Pacifica Resource Center wishes you peaceful and loving holidays and a hope-filled New Year. Happy holidays, one and all.
Thank you. Cindy Abbott. Hello.
Mayor Beckmeyer, Vice Mayor Bowles, who I look forward to calling mayor in just maybe a short time, and all members of the council. Cindy Abbott, West Sharp Park in the coastal zone. It was July 14, 2025, when we were all here together for an exciting time, when the city council approved the new short-term rental ordinance. The community, after spending three years engaging with you, appreciating your listening to us, is still waiting for updates on when this will be sent to the Coastal Commission for it to be enacted in the coastal zone. We continue to have hard times here in the coastal zone, including our friends and neighbors here on Beach Boulevard, specifically with regard to the nuisance STR that's existed for years, that countless complaints have been filed on at 1987 Beach Boulevard. And yet, we get little response from city staff about the status of that unit. We don't get updates regularly that you requested and that we all requested about when was this going to the Coastal Commission, what can we expect? And for that one unit, why is it even being considered to renew when it has a documented history of nuisances, extensive time by code enforcement, the police, and so many on city staff? What a waste of time it's been. When can we actually have that relief? We all really look forward to hearing about it so that we can fully celebrate the new ordinance that had been so long in coming. I appreciate your ongoing support for this. Thanks.
Thank you. And the last card I have is Anita Reese.
Hello, Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. I will do a couple of updates from what Suzanne said. Thank you, Suzanne. We actually just double-checked our numbers for Thanksgiving, and this year, because we were able to help the folks on the waitlist, we actually helped 715 families, I'm sorry, individuals from 246 families. Last year, it was 560 folks, so that is a 30% increase from last year to this year. And that is primarily because community members turned out in droves to help us help folks who needed help during the holidays. So far, for Holiday Joy, we have enrolled 205 children, so over our 200 children goal, and we will continue to support families as they come in, and we will match them as we can. So if you still want to participate as a sponsor or as a family, please reach out because we will do what we can to support. We did have several folks who gave funds instead of gifts, so that will allow us to purchase gift cards for those families. Best way to reach us to enroll for holidays is 650-738-7470, or emailing at info@pacresourcecenter.org. We have our grocery distribution that is on Wednesday, tomorrow. I saw Supervisor Mueller here. Thanks to the supervisors, we were able to provide additional proteins, which will be distributed tomorrow, I'm sorry, on Wednesday to our holiday, well, to our grocery distribution folks on Wednesday at the American Legion Hall, starting at 2:00 until about 5:00. We expect to distribute over 200 chickens. We chose chickens over turkeys and hams because it was easier to store them. But next year, we hope to do a combination of both of those items. We just were a little worried about getting too many of those things. I also just wanted to share, our Unhoused on the Coast outreach team will respond to requests for outreach to unhoused folks in Pacifica through Pescadero every Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, 9:00 to 5:00. So if you see someone living outside or in a vehicle, please email us at ucutreach@pacresourcecenter.org, or call us at 650-452-6279. I did want to let you know that as of today, there are 85 unhoused folks in Pacifica in seven encampments. There are 61 folks in those encampments, but two of them are our temporary safe parking program. So in actuality, there are 41 folks who are unhoused that are not connected to our temporary safe parking program. And I'll continue to provide that information as we go. It has gone down by about 10 folks from the last time I reported, which was a month ago. And as always, it fluctuates. There are some new folks coming in, other folks getting housed or moving along. But please give us a call again, 650-738-7470. Main Office. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Assistant City Clerk, is there anyone on the phone for this?
There's one raised hand for Irene Lee.
Please go ahead, Irene.
She is unmuted.
Irene, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you if you're speaking. Will you keep an eye on Irene? And if it looks like we need to reopen public comment, we'll squeeze her in. Okay, because it may be technical difficulties that we can't resolve with time. Okay, thank you, Assistant City Clerk. We're going to move on. Okay, so just to be difficult, a tiny bit difficult, I'm not trying to be, I'm really not. I'm just trying to manage time because I know there's some folks that are here that can't stay long, and I want to see City Clerk Coffee and Assistant City Attorney Bizzano. The next item is the consideration, and it's the selection of mayor and vice mayor. That is our consideration for this evening. But there are a bunch of steps in that process, one of which, it's awkward to say this, is the comments and discussion to the outgoing mayor. So that includes my outgoing mayor remarks and public comment and a few things. And I'm wondering if it's possible for us to do public comment first on just that piece, and then do the outgoing mayor's remarks and the gavel thing and all of that. Is that okay to flip?
Yeah, it's within the council's discretion to make those determinations on how the order of the item shall be conducted.
Great. That's what I'd like to do. If you're all all right with that. All right. So another thing I want to say is about a year ago, we were here, and we had, it seemed not enough clarity on the public comment piece of the evening. And so I just want to make it very clear that there's going to be three opportunities for a public comment. This piece right now, outgoing mayor, and then mayor, the vote for appointing our mayor, and then vice mayor. So actually, three separate things. It's not all in one. And with that, I'm going to open public comment and recognize our esteemed supervisor, Ray Mueller.
Thank you. And I thank the council and staff for allowing me to speak. In this time of season, I have to be like Santa Claus and travel all over the district very quickly. But I wanted to say, first, to Mayor Beckmeyer, I want to really express my appreciation to you. You hold a full-time job, and this is your second time as mayor. And a lot of people don't realize, the first time you're mayor, it's like, oh, mayor, and then, you know, everyone calls you mayor for the first time, and it's like, you'll sort of live in the glow of that for about half a year, and then it really, then the glow goes away and you get to work. And then the second time you're mayor, it hits you immediately. The glow really isn't there, and there's a ton of work to do, and you really feel it. And I just want to acknowledge that for you, how much work that you put in. And I don't think, I'm not sure if folks in Pacifica know, also the amount of work that you do regionally. You're on all of these regional committees that you show up on, and you fiercely advocate for Pacifica on those committees. And, you know, a lot of people go there, and for those who don't know, you go to these committees, and some people show up to talk about policy. Sue shows up to talk about Pacifica, and she talks about Pacifica and what Pacifica needs. And I was, and just this week, I saw you, and I don't know how you got there, because I know you have a job, but you were there with Congressman Licardo at the coast side for the future event. And then you ended up at the Labor Council. I was just like, I don't know how Sue's showing up everywhere. And so I was just incredibly impressed. And then on top of all of that, you signed up to coordinate Fog Fest this year, which I have no idea how you did.
Well, that wasn't just me. I just have to interject.
I know.
There's a gentleman by the name of John Beckmeyer.
I know, but just incredible.
I didn't do it.
So on behalf of the county, I just want to express our gratitude to you for all the work that you've done. I have a certificate of appreciation, assigned by all the supervisors. Just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, Ray. I'm going to step down really quick because I know you have to go.
And then, I won't be here, but Vice Mayor Bowles, very much looking forward to working with you next year. You have been such a strong advocate on environmental issues and on serving the underserved here in this community. I can't wait to partner with you. And just congratulations on what I think, what I think's going to happen, but I have no idea because of the Brown Act, but congratulations on that. And then just one other, just two other small notes. So I wanted to say, just one second. I wanted to say, well, first, I'll address Lynn. I know you're being honored later tonight, and I just heartfelt appreciation, I didn't know it was happening, but a heartfelt appreciation to you, and we'll be celebrating future awards for you later this year. And to Anita, thank you for bringing the love and the mercy of the best parts of humanity to those who need it this year, who especially need it this year. So tremendous gratitude to you. And with all of that, happy holidays. Looking forward to seeing you in the New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Nick Harjes, a representative from Congressman Sam Licardo's office, and Ruby Maine from Assembly Member Mark Berman's office, and Anthony Yoshida from Senator Josh Becker's office. Please go ahead, Nicholas.
Good evening, Council. My name is Nicholas. I'm a field representative for Congressman Licardo. Congressman Licardo wishes that he could be here this evening, but he asked me to present a certificate of congressional recognition to Mayor Sue Beckmeyer on the completion of her term leading the City of Pacifica. Mayor Beckmeyer, your commitment to fostering unity, achieving consensus, and advancing strong policies will strengthen the city for decades to come. And congratulations to Vice Mayor Bowles on your soon-to-be appointment. The congressman looks forward to working with all of you to serve the City of Pacifica.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Ruby Maine from Assembly Member Mark Berman's office.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. My name is Ruby Maine. I am with Assembly Member Mark Berman's office. To Mayor Beckmeyer, thank you so much for your years of service and your tenure as mayor. I wanted to share a brief story that came to mind as I was standing there. But Mayor Beckmeyer, the first day that I met you, it was at the Pacifica Beach Coalition Earth Day Festival. And I remember multiple students coming up and saying, hi, Ms. Beckmeyer, how are you? Hello? And I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership. And I just wanted to say thank you for your leadership, not only for our town, but for your service to our next generation and serving students and educating them on how to be leaders of our generation. So thank you for your service, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Anthony Yoshida from Senator Becker's office.
Good evening, council. Mayor Beckmeyer, I just want to say it's been an absolute pleasure getting to work on projects this year with you and with Vice Mayor Bowles, really highlighting Pacifica and the issues that Pacifica faces. You know, the senator enjoys every second that he's able to come out and visit Pacifica. So thank you very much for your service leading the city this year, and best of luck in the coming year. And on a side note, the new park on Maravilla Circle, I grew up there. I'm so excited for that park to get redone, because it has looked the same since I was in diapers. So I am super pumped for that. So thank you for all you do.
Thanks so much, Anthony. Oh, my gosh. That's so great. That is so great. I do have a few cards, and I would like to see if any of them specifically call out for this, and I don't think they do, so.
There's one from Tiger.
Oh, there is one. Wait, that's consideration item mayor. No, that's probably for the next one. Okay, let me just do it this way. Tiger Joss Troll's Big Stick. I have Dinah Verby and Suzanne Moore. And I think those, Diane and Suzanne are for the voting item. Is that correct? Am I right about that? Yes. Okay, great. I'll hold those. Tiger, please. Thank you.
I know it's serious when I write it down. I wanted to do it off the cuff but couldn't. Usually I don't have the opportunity of specifying one person, but tonight, Sue. You who choose to lead must follow, but if you fall, you fall alone. And if you should stand, then who's to guide you? Your time as mayor has been a masterclass in learning, and I emphasize the word "learning", to choose the good despite an opportunity at perceived perfection. You've risen to the occasion of learning to think through the full breadth of ramifications, giving deference to the fact that what we haven't considered may be far scarier than the terror we've otherwise clearly and fully identified. To this point, I watched you lose the last of your rigidity in order to become what any mayor worth their salt invariably does, which is, they become flexible to the point of encompassing the big picture's fullness. In your case, this is particularly impressive because I am looking at the full picture over the more than last eight years of knowing you, watching the inner struggle, and ultimately your initially acute sense of leaning to instead rise finally to the occasion of balance. Usually I name the elephant. Tonight, I merely allude to it, but I shall do it this way. What you have shown us as mayor is the willingness to be fully and therefore vulnerably human. That thereto from own personal imperfection begins the inner work of self-perfecting, the journey of learning and growing from the metaphorical seas around you, not as an island, but as a leader instead steering a ship far heavier than it otherwise appears from the dock. Learning to put aside any perfection that could exist at large for the good that absolutely exists when the premise of learning and growing together in fullness acutely exists. Forevermore, as every who have come before you, you are the mayor. And I am proud to have been represented this year by a person who owns their imbalances in a fashion that informs how genuine and difficult growth, how genuine and difficult growth and healing can transpire when initiated on behalf of us all. Well, the first days are the hardest days. Don't you worry anymore, because when life looks like easy street, there is danger at your door. Think this through with me. Let me know your mind. Oh, what I want to know is, well, you know how the rest of our holy scriptures go. Congratulations. Enjoy a short rest and a certain ease off your shoulders.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. That was very nice. Thank you. Suzanne? Oh, Suzanne. Hey, hi, Suzanne.
Dinah told me to go next.
Okay.
All right. Honorable council members, city staff, and Pacifica neighbors, this has been an extremely busy year, and we've asked our council and city staff to do a lot of work. I'm very grateful for you all. And I, as a district two resident, am delighted that Christine Bowles is going to be mayor. I know she will continue to work hard.
Suzanne, I'm going to cut you off, because.
It's a general one.
Okay. I just want to make sure this is really about.
No, no, it comes all the way around.
She's bringing it around.
Yeah, yeah.
My dear friend, thank you.
Yeah, otherwise I wouldn't be here. But anyway, I know she will continue to work hard on behalf of our district and our city. And for our new vice mayor, whoever receives that honor, I know you'll have a mayor and folks on council who shares your vision for a thriving Pacifica with a deep love for our hills and beaches, a Pacifica that welcomes diversity, provides sanctuary for our immigrants, and is willing to address the social issues of our age: homelessness, climate change, and the housing affordability crisis. And don't worry, Pacifica is blessed with an amazing group of folks who are willing to work along with you. It will take a village in collaboration with our county, our state, and our nation. There is a work ahead for all of us. My family wishes you all some wonderful holidays. Roll up your sleeves, because 2026 will be here soon.
Fair point. I did receive another card. Sue Vaterlos.
Sue Vaterlos, I wasn't intending to speak, but as former mayor, I'd like to say that I think Sue Beckmeyer is the best mayor we've ever had. I appreciate everything she always does. Someone asks a question, she's out there researching, finding out the answers to all the questions. And I just appreciate you as a person and as the mayor and as a council member and our things that we've done together. And just thank you. Bye.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Ms. Emily? Anyone on the phone?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, great. So then, I'm going to bring it to council, and we're going to go back to the written agenda. I need to check in quickly with the city clerk to see if there's any staff report thing that you need to say at this point, or is that for the next part of our cavalcade?
Do we not get to give you?
You do, but I'm giving the city clerk.
The staff report will come later. Now is the time for council comments and presentations to the mayor.
That's the staff report? Wow. That's quick. Okay. Counsel, I have one light. Just Mary Beer, want to talk? Please, Mary Beer.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Super important that we're all here and be joyous together. When Ruby got up, I was thinking, when was the first time I met you? Because we were running together, and we didn't know each other at all, which was so weird. Yeah. And I can't really remember that initial time, but I do know that the past eight years, seven, seven years, I keep going ahead, has been extraordinary with you. And we, you and I, have grown and learned so much. Sometimes it was really, really hard and really, really uncomfortable, and other times, it just flowed so great. And I'm really glad that Supervisor Mueller brought up all of the work that you do regionally, because it's really, really important, and it has helped. And those relationships and all of the work that you have done for our coastal issues and just across the board. But I will say that learning from you has been one of the honors of my life, and I'm really happy that I get to do it for a whole nother year, and then we're going on vacation. So I look forward to that. I love you dearly, and I don't care. I'm saying love.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilmember Wright?
I'm thrilled to be able to thank you so much for all that we've been able to do this year, the leadership, the mentorship, the opportunities that you've given me to watch you in action as we serve on CCG and a lot of those regional things, the opportunities to have talks on the way carpooling to some of these regional things. I've seen you in action. I've seen you working with our regional leaders. And having built those relationships, I am, it's bittersweet, because in part, we only have one more year of being able to access all those wonderful relationships and the bounty that comes from that when we lose you after next year. And I hope I can live up and aspire to be and do all the things you've done for this city. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Ray. Thank you. Vice Mayor Bowles.
Sue.
Christine.
What a difference a year makes.
We've got a lot of song lyrics tonight.
While we went through some growing pains earlier this year, I so appreciate that it led to the opportunity to reset our relationship and to really get to know each other in a way that just hadn't been possible the two previous years. We're both so passionate about the city, and while we might not agree about everything, that's okay. I mean, that's why we're all here, bringing our own voices and experiences to this deliberation, to this work, you know, to try to come to consensus together, you know, to lead the city forward in the best way possible. And I really appreciate that. The work we, you and I, did together and with the council that came out of that, just improving our mayoral transition process, thank Mary and Myra for working on that and bringing us forward. But also, you know, our council handbook and how we run our meetings and doing agenda planning, there's so much good that came out of that earlier in the year that I think will really help the council, you know, for years to come. So it was really good, important work. And I just want to thank you personally for working with me. It was a pleasure, actually, as mayor, vice mayor together, and I've learned a lot from you and your leadership. I'm always so amazed at how you can just speak so, I can't even say the word, extemporar, something like that.
Extemporaneously?
Just the way your mind works and translates to your thoughts and the way that you communicate is just such a gift. And then we've worked together on short-term rentals, on improving our communication and relationship with the Pacifica Resource Center, the city manager recruitment process, and then open discussions about our critical coastal adaptation work that will continue, right? We're not done this year. And so this relationship, this partnership that we've built, will continue to serve us and the city as we move forward together, and I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you so much.
I have something to say. Oh, I, well, I figured. So I had to say that I have, the first time I met any council other than Christine was you after I was nominated, after the elections. And you came to meet me. That was very important to me, to find out who I was. And like I said, I always, when I have the opportunity to talk to somebody, I show them my heart, because I don't want to hide anything. I want you to know who I am. And I, in that conversation, I did that, and I could feel your soul too. And we had the opportunity to do things together, and I appreciate your leadership. You never was like a bossy, you were like a partner working with me, even though I didn't have the experience, and I do appreciate that. So in, I noticed that everywhere we go, you're always looking for the councils to, 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 to name them, so they know, people know they were there. So that is so important. So I feel like you are paying attention to that. And I really appreciate you, and I look forward to keep working with you.
Thank you so much, Myra. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I don't have a speech written because I didn't have time. You'd think I would, but I didn't. I definitely thought a lot about it. I thought a lot about going down this list of mayoral accomplishments and things that we got done this last year. And I prepared such a document, and it exists because I was asked to prepare it. So if you want it, it's a public document, you can request it. What I think the biggest accomplishment this council has had this year is to rebound from what was a inauspicious start, and look where we are now. And we've had to come through some hard stuff. I mean, some of the decision-making that we have to make is just, it's difficult. And it's really difficult if your relationships are uneven, unsteady, and uncertain, because I think Tiger mentioned it, there's no opportunity for vulnerability there. There's no willingness for that. And so much of what we're working on is, you know, by and of our community. So we are by and of our community, and if we can't be vulnerable, how do we get anywhere? So, you know, we still got a ton of work to do, let me just say. I was sort of bummed recently when I realized, sort of like that feeling when you have finals or something, you're like, yeah, that one's done, oh, yeah, that one's done. And there's nothing left, really. There's, you know, a few little things. Well, there's a lot left. There's a lot, a lot that we need to do as a city, and that we're going to keep putting one foot in front of the other to do it. You know, many public meetings to come, many, many public input processes to come. Some stuff's going to be super boring and tedious and horrible, like zoning updates, no offense to the planners in the room, but yuck. And yet, it's so needs to happen. It just needs to happen. It's something that, there've been a lot of, a lot of things that were deferred maintenance. And, you know, our general plan was one of them, our local coastal land use plan, which is still a ton of work to do there. But those relationships that we have built among ourselves and that then we can extend over the hill to Sacramento, to Washington, are helping. And we can't do that if we can't work together. So it warms my heart to hear that it's working. I just want to say, you know, in conclusion, we couldn't do any of this without our staff who work incredibly, incredibly hard and do more with less than any staff I've ever seen. I thought it was bad at the school district. I've worked there for almost 20 years. Boy, uh-uh, no way. There's just a layer of legality and municipal work that I didn't appreciate, thought I did, sort of, kind of, before I ran for city council, but my eyes have been opened so much and to how one thing, you think it's just with this department or just with this department, and it isn't, because it touches on other departments. And so the notion of why does it take so long for things to happen, because it's done with care. And I want to commend, could I just ask, please, staff to stand up? I see you in the back. Could everybody who's a staff member please stand up? I want to acknowledge you. And our staff here in the front, Emily, Sarah, Kevin, Denise, please stand up. I want everyone to see these are the people right here. And there are a ton of people who aren't here because they're, you know, at home, hello, and also standing by, ready to work, are fired. and also standing by, ready to work, our firefighters, our on-call public works, you know, when the seawall breach happens, they're there. When the tree falls, they're there. And then the last thing I will say, and it's, I'm so excited this happened tonight again because it happened recently and I blew it and didn't, and missed the opportunity, to acknowledge and thank with, from the bottom of my heart, our PCT team, of our all-female team tonight. We have Jennifer, Lori, and Zoe. Jennifer, Lori, and Zoe. Zoe, where are you? Come out. Wave hello if you can in that booth in there. Thank you. You guys are amazing, the work that you do and that you're so patient, and I know we keep you up and you have school and everything. Thank you for being so gracious always. So that's enough from me. Thank you, community, for putting up with me, you know. I know I'm not easy, and I am grateful to you because, Tiger Jazz trolls big stick, the opportunity for growth came because of this. So thank you for that because I get to keep that. That stays with me forever. Thank you.
And with that, I get to present a few gifts to our outgoing mayor, Sue Beckmeyer. So starting with a card from council, and there's a, there's a little present inside there.
Except for me, I don't think I signed it, but I'll sign it later. I promise.
Pass it back to Mary. So we're, we're treating you to a massage at the wonderful Oceanside Healing.
Awesome!
We know how exhausting this work is, and it's lovely to have a break in December with no meetings and time to refresh before January. This is a gift from the city, your very own devil with your name, but you already have one.
So can I take it off? And yeah, I can play like drums now with this. It's fun. Thank you.
We have a beautiful photo of Pacifica by Falu Bakrani, who's an award-winning photographer here on, lives on Manor Drive and also teaches at San Francisco State. I'll show it to everyone here. And I, and I picked this one because the ocean's very calm and there's no infrastructure that you have to worry about. So just enjoy our beautiful nature. I believe Councilmember Beer has picked some beautiful Pacifica local gifts for you here.
I thought it would carry out the cotton crustacean tradition.
So much. Oh, my goodness. Yes.
We have some fantastic small businesses here in our town.
This is the artwork I love so much. Oh, sorry. This is the artwork I love so much. He released this one right before Fog Fest. It's absolutely stunning. Oh, my gosh. This is so great. Oh, my gosh. Oh, wow. Oh, my gosh.
Octopi.
So fantastic.
Look at that new color.
I love it.
Thanks, AJ.
Thank you so much. That's a little thing. Okay.
Okay. I understand there's a bottle of hard liquor coming your way. Maybe it's here in the audience already.
It better be.
There's something there.
Oh, I don't know about that one.
Small little.
I can't imagine where this might have come from. Thank you so much.
Here it comes. Thank you, Bali, for being the delivery person.
I don't want you to get the wrong idea. Please. All things in moderation. Oh, man. I love it.
What is it, Jim?
Gray whale gin.
Good stuff.
Thank you. Thank you so much. My gosh, you guys, it just.
And then there's a beautiful orchid here that Myra picked.
I want you to have a plant. I want you to have a Christmas tree also, so everything.
That's all there. Perfect. Thanks, because it might not have happened. Thank you. Oh, my gosh.
And I don't know about this one. So another beautiful surprise for you here.
Does anyone know about this one?
No.
Okay.
Do it.
I'm doing it. Too real. Dead and Company at the Sphere, May 9, 2025. Yeah, baby. Wow. That is so amazing. Well, you guys, I'm overwhelmed. I'm, I'm totally overwhelmed. Thank you. I'm gonna put all of this away and let us get to some more business because there's more fun to be had tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, City Clerk Coffey, I turn it over to you for our staff report.
So just with a little background on the process that we'll be following tonight for the upcoming portions of the mayor and vice mayor selections, we will have a separate public comment period for the selection of mayor and for the selection of vice mayor. So during the process of the selection of mayor, there will be a call for public comments specifically for the selection of the mayor process. The city council met recently to adopt a specific process for selection of mayor and vice mayor and incorporated that into Section 9 of the City Council Rules and Code of Ethics. So I will be describing the, the process that was incorporated into the Council Rules and Code of Ethics in Section 9. Generally, the, the process will be that the city clerk would inform the eligible council members for their eligibility for mayor, and then also for vice mayor for that process prior to the, prior to the meeting in conjunction with the agenda packet going out. The eligibility for council members for mayor and vice mayor was discussed in the Section 9 of the Council Rules and Code of Ethics that was adopted. For the eligibility for the selection of mayor, a council member is eligible to be considered for mayor if they have served as vice mayor in the preceding year. And, and then also, if there were any council members that deferred the nomination for mayor in the immediately preceding year, they would be eligible for consideration as well. In this year, there were no council members that had deferred from last year for eligibility for mayor. And no council members declined the nomination for mayor last year. Based on that criteria, the council members eligible for consideration for mayor are Christine Bowles and Mary Beer, both having served a portion of the preceding year in the role of vice mayor or mayor pro tem, as it used to be called. Before the, before the deliberations to come to a nomination and motion to appoint a named individual to mayor, there will be council questions and council statements. Then we'll open public comment on the selection of mayor item. Following public comment, council members will deliberate to reach a formal motion to appoint an individual to mayor. The motion will require a second. After a motion and a second, the council members may debate that motion and second, and then followed by a vote, which requires a majority vote to approve the selection of mayor. Council members making statements may make statements such as interest in deferring or declining, declining the nomination for deterrent, for deferring the nomination. A deferral means that the, the member deferring is eligible for consideration for that role in the following year. If the member declines nomination, they are not eligible for consideration in the current year or the following year. So a deferral is, you know, withholding for this year but being eligible to consider for that role next year. Declining, declining means the person is not interested and would not be considered for that role in the following year. With that, I will take any council questions, and the mayor may call for council statements before public comments and deliberations.
Are there any statements or questions that we need to address? I don't have any lights right now guiding me as to any questions or statements anyone wishes to make. So the eligibility for mayor is Christine Bowles and Mary Beer.
Oh, yes. So then I should make a statement.
Would you like to?
Yes, I would like to. Here's my light.
Oh, okay. I'm now going to turn off.
Yeah, I politely decline my eligibility to be mayor. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Short and sweet.
I appreciate that. Thanks for that. Okay, so any statements from anyone else or questions? We will be having public comment. That's my next thing I plan to get to unless there's any other comments from council at this point. Seeing none, I'm going to open public comment. This is on consideration of mayor. And I have Dinah Verbi, and I need to circle back with Suzanne Moore one time just to make sure.
Says no.
No. Okay, because I wasn't, I couldn't tell from the description on the card. Thank you. Okay, Dinah, please go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Well, I just wanted to lend my wholehearted support for the nomination of Christine Bowles for our next mayor, and thank you, Mary, for declining. That's an incredibly wonderful gesture. And thank you, Sue, for all that you've done as mayor and I know will continue to do on the council. I know that some of us haven't been the easiest crowd for you to deal with, but I do want you to know that we appreciate how responsive you've been and how responsive the council has been in the face of, you know, what was a very difficult beginning. So good luck and happy holidays to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Assistant City Clerk, are there any, is there anyone on the phone?
There are no raised hands.
And are there, there's more cards, maybe more people coming up? Okay, more cards are coming. Lynn Adams, please, please.
I just want to say what a difference this year from last year, and I really appreciate the growth that's taken, and I wholeheartedly support Christine Bowles for mayor for the coming year. She's been amazingly diligent and thorough, and she's communicated very well with my, in my district. She is my, in my district representative, and I'm very, will be very proud to have her as mayor and know that we are in good hands with her leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay. I have also Cliff Lawrence.
Hello, council and staff. It's been a very interesting year. Appreciate the struggle, the work, everything that you've done. It's also been a period of growth for us and in the way we engage, how we communicate, and I want to say we are very grateful for all the work that all of you have done. After the successes of this year, we're looking forward to this coming year with Christine. Christine, I think, has so much promise. I, I can't imagine. I know some of the things that she has initiated in this past year and brought to fruition. And anyway, it's, it's exciting. Very much look forward to Christine's tenure. Thank you.
Thank you. And Summer Lee.
Wow, I just got emotional looking at you, Christine.
Same, Summer.
What a milestone. It's with a full, heavy heart and joyous heart because I know what kind of work you already do and what this year is going to mean for you for more work. But I'm, I represent a lot of people, neighbors in your district, and we're so, so happy that you're there. It's been a huge difference since you've been on council representing us. And I wanted to say thank you to Mary Beer. A year ago, you stood up and you were very heroic, and it was a really hard moment for you. And I think I said that night that that will be part of your legacy, and as well as also when you became mayor, you changed the whole tenor of how council meetings were operated, and I just want to keep acknowledging that because that was really big. And to future Vice Mayor Maida Espinoza, I hope. I want to plant that seed, but to be continued. But again, Christine, thank you. Thank you for everything.
Okay, I don't have any other cards and don't see any coming up here. Assistant City Clerk?
There are no raised hands.
Okay. With that, I think we are ready for any other comments, any discussion or a motion?
I would like to put forward a motion that Christine Bowles becomes our next mayor.
I will second that.
Everybody's second it.
We second. We will second that one. One, two, three.
Second.
I second. Of course, you have to have a real one, don't you, for the record? I know.
I think I heard Councilmember Espinoza speak up first for the second.
I think so. All right. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Waiting for one more vote. There we go. And with the motion to appoint Christine Bowles as mayor made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Councilmember Espinoza, the vote passes unanimously.
Sarah, can you turn the lights on again on the vote? Okay, well, I need to get all this out of the way. Let me, I'm gonna leave this for you. I'm gonna leave this. Okay, let me move this paper. Sorry.
Are you gonna be my new?
I'm your new roommate. I don't know. All these papers.
My clients.
Any questions? Those are yours. Switcher, change on. Switcher, change on. Last time you were talking.
We're doing a shifting of the seats now.
Can I, can I ask if I could adjourn the meeting in honor of someone? I've just seen one of our community members has passed away.
Oh, absolutely. Okay. Yep, we've got a little ways to go. This is the hot seat.
Is it warm?
It is warm. Thank you, Sue, for warming it for me. I have written some words because I get nervous, and there's a lot I want to say to all of you and to my colleagues. And, and words matter, so if you'll be patient with me. So hello, Pacifica. I'm just so excited to be here and to be able to represent you as mayor in this next year. I want to start by thanking you, the public, for putting your trust in me, for electing me three years ago, and for speaking up early this year so that I might have this opportunity to lead our beloved city in this way. I want to thank this council, Sue, Mary, Myra, Greg, for your votes of confidence in me and in my leadership tonight. And I especially want to thank Mary, who graciously and selflessly put her own desires aside so that I could serve in this position. Really appreciate you. And of course, I want to give my heartfelt appreciation to our hardworking staff, as you saw, standing in the back and here on both sides. While the five of us might sit up here and look important, our dedicated staff are the ones actually doing the day-to-day hard work to ensure Pacifica not only functions but thrives. I appreciate city manager Woodhouse overseeing and leading these efforts the past seven years. We'll get to talk more about you later next year. And along with a small, smart and talented executive team and each employee that works here in the city. I also want to acknowledge that the transition to a city, new city manager, is a bit scary for all of us and especially for staff. The city attorney, Kenyon, told me that finding the next city manager is the most critical work the council will do in our tenure. And I want to assure you that council member Beckmeyer and I as the ad hoc committee, but really all of us here on council, will do our very best to make sure we find the best person possible to serve this unique community. I also see this transition as an opportunity to reflect together on what has gone well and what we might want to tweak as we collectively look towards the next five to 10 years. And to our potential city manager, who I'm told will be watching this meeting at some point, I want to say that we are so excited to meet you. We promise to help you ease into this role and to work hand-in-hand with you to achieve the city's goals and priorities. We look forward to learning about the gifts and experience you will be bringing to us. While we have our challenges, there is so much potential here in Pacifica with our united council, our dedicated and caring staff, and our amazing engaged community working in partnership. There's nothing we can't do. New mayors often talk about their priorities as they assume office. What's wonderful is that my priorities are shared by the whole council in our established mission, vision, and values. Our vision, the guiding light pointing us to where we want to move towards, says, "Pacifica strives to be an inclusive and sustainable community environmentally, economically, socially, and holistically." Working with city manager Woodhouse and staff, we've been laying the blocks towards that vision over the last few years. One example I'm so proud of is our new climate action plan and the formation of a new committee that will start work on the implementation. Climate change is here and is already affecting us, and we need to be an active global partner, reducing our emissions and caring for our mother earth, starting right here at home. I just found out I got appointed to a state-level environmental policy committee, and I'm really looking forward to representing Pacifica's interests while advocating for state laws that empower us locally to do more. One of our council's top priorities for next year is to work on our visioning and climate adaptation for our coastline, such an urgent need as our coast is already eroding and flooding with greater and greater frequency. We have a responsibility, not just for the here and now, but for future generations and for the creatures with whom we share this beautiful piece of our planet. As an architect and environmentalist, I'm really excited to help lead these efforts, finding creative ways to balance the competing interests as well as the growing threat to infrastructure that requires difficult long-term planning. If we're going to be able to move forward and find funding, we need to be able to listen respectfully to each other and somehow bring the community together towards consensus. I want to thank Sue for working on these issues with me this year as well as at the state level for several years now, and I look forward to our continued collaboration. Financial sustainability is also a huge challenge. This council is committed to working with staff and all of you, the community, to find creative solutions to save money and bring in more revenue. While we don't have the biotech or other magic bullets that our neighboring cities have, I believe what we do have, our beautiful setting nestled between the ocean and the mountains, can be our economic engine with focused marketing and strategic new development, bringing people here to visit from all over for health and wellness. This is how we take care of each other, too, aligning with our age-friendly initiatives, helping each other live long, healthy, and fulfilled lives. Aren't we lucky to live here? And we so need to build truly affordable housing, not just because the state's forcing us to, but because many of our long-term residents, longtime residents, like Myra's neighbor, who just lost his home, are struggling to afford to stay. It breaks my heart to know that the fastest-growing homeless population are seniors. I personally know one of them, a beautiful woman living in her van on our streets, still working and trying to stay positive while dealing with major health issues. Living on the street takes its toll. It's not something she wants, and it's not something we, who are lucky enough to have a roof over our head, want to see on our streets either. But right now, we have very few options to offer. One of the things I love the most about Pacifica that I've never seen anywhere else that I've lived is our community and how we take care of each other. So I know if we come together to work on these issues in partnership with our amazing Pacifica Resource Center, who you've heard from twice this evening, we can make a difference, helping one person, one family at a time, getting housed. The need is great, and with the PRC now serving 20% of Pacificans, that number's gone up from 15% just last year. Please, I'm just going to encourage you all to be generous and donate to them if you can for the amazing work that they do. Our council's final key goal is to broaden public communications and collaboration. I've been sending out a newsletter the past three years telling anyone who cares not just what we're doing, but why, to give you a heads up so that hopefully you can come and participate in our decisions because your voice does matter. So if you're not on that list now, send me an email and I'm happy to add you. And this year, I'd also like to add a focus to increase our youth engagement. It's been beautiful seeing them working on our climate action plan, but their voices could be here for a lot of important issues facing the city. And I'm grateful I've got two high school interns that just volunteered with me this year, Calvin Chan and Ruthie Alcazar. So more is coming on that early next year. So I know that your head's not going to be an easy one, but I'm confident with this wonderful collaborative council, the five of us, and our incredible city staff and our passionate community, we will thrive as we continue to put together the building blocks for a more sustainable city that serves all of our residents well. And then just last, but certainly not least, I want to thank my family, especially my husband, Bob, in the front row. My children, Elisa and my son David is here tonight, and my mom, Nicole. You all are my biggest cheerleaders, and I would not be able to be here doing this work without your support every day. So if any of you appreciate me, then please make sure you appreciate them and thank them tonight before we leave. So thank you very much. And with that, we'll now be leading the selection of the vice mayor. So city clerk coffee, if you could guide us through those steps.
I'll start by saying congratulations, Mayor Bowles.
Thank you.
And for the eligibility for the selection of vice mayor as established in the council rules, section nine, a council member is eligible to be considered for the position of vice mayor if they have served at least 11 months on city council and they are not serving in the final year of their second term on city council. If a council member had deferred the nomination for vice mayor in the immediately preceding year, they may be considered for this nomination in this year. If a council member had declined the nomination in the preceding year, they cannot be considered for the nomination in this year. There were no deferrals or declinations for vice mayor last year, so based on the above, the following council members have served at least 11 months on city council and are not serving in their final year of the second term and are eligible to be considered for the role of vice mayor. Christine Bowles, who was just appointed as mayor, so probably would not be considered as vice mayor. Followed by Myra Espinoza and Greg Wright. Sue Beckmeyer and Mary Beer will be serving in their final year of their second term on city council, so would not be eligible for consideration of vice mayor at this time under the policy. And our newly selected Mayor Bowles will serve as the presiding chair for this portion and the remaining portion of the meeting. And that concludes my staff report on this section, and we will then go to the mayor calling for any council questions or statements by eligible council members. And then we'll have public comments regarding the selection of vice mayor. Following public comments, the council members will deliberate to reach a formal motion. The motion must be seconded, and the mayor, after the motion and second, should call for any further debate of the motion prior to calling for the vote. A majority vote is required to approve the selection of vice mayor.
Sarah, are there any council member questions or?
I do have a question. So I know that Greg and I are eligible, and I know that he wants to be a vice mayor. And I feel that if someone wanted to do something, I wanted to support that. And I know that I will have an opportunity to be a vice mayor later. So I am happy to have Greg Wright to become the next vice mayor.
Thank you, Myra.
You're welcome. Do I need to ask if that's an official deferral or declination?
Yeah, you may want to clarify if council member Espinoza means to defer the nomination or to decline the nomination. Alternatively, she, if not deferring or declining, she may during deliberations put forth the motion to nominate and appoint council member Wright as the vice mayor.
So just making sure you know the difference, the deferral means that you would be eligible next year, and declining means you wouldn't be eligible for two years.
Right, I am, I am doing the deferral.
Deferral, okay. Great, thank you. So if there are no other questions or statements, I'll open public comment. I don't have any cards for this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, Emily, do we have anyone on the phone?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, last chance. Okay, with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion or discussion. My light is on. Oh, I'm so sorry. I am not used to looking at those lights yet. Plus, it says Bowles. We haven't changed that yet. Council member Beckmeyer.
Thank you. Well, I am just going to say, what an orderly process. It's so nice and so refreshing. I'm really proud of us. And thank you for your hard work, Sarah, to help us get to this place. Since there's really not any big discussion that anyone stepped forward to have, I would like to offer a motion.
Could I make a comment before we get?
Before I make my motion?
Please.
I leave the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to express to Myra how much I appreciate working with her this year. We have been so many different places, gone far, and I've really enjoyed watching you grow and blossom in this role, and I really look forward to working with you in the years to come. And thanks for being such a good, wonderful coworker in this. It's not easy, and we know up here all the considerations that not everybody sees, and you see that, and it's great watching you find your voice, and I appreciate everything it is that you do for us and for the city.
Thank you, Greg. I, one thing that I feel is like the public probably want us to, not to be buddy-buddies, but having, being able to work together, that is important. And I feel like why to fight for a position when there is going to be time for me to represent my community too, and so I don't have to kind of fight for this, you know, position. So I think you're going to do a great job.
So with that, and if, oh, well, I shouldn't ask for it. I'll just make a motion. I move that we elect Greg Wright as our vice mayor.
I'll second.
That one.
And I'll call the roll call vote since we have not swapped the names on the vote board. So with the motion to appoint Greg Wright as vice mayor made by council member Beckmeyer and seconded by council member Espinoza, I'll start the roll call vote.
Could I ask a question to the mayor? Are you allowed to vote for yourself or?
Yes, you are. With the motion and the second, the mayor may wish to call for any debate of the motion and second.
Is there any other debate or conversation? I don't think so. Let's go ahead and vote.
Okay. And now for the roll call vote, starting with council member Wright.
Aye.
Council member Espinoza.
Aye.
Council member Beer.
Yes.
Council member Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Bowles.
Yes.
And the motion to appoint council member Wright as vice mayor passes unanimously.
Yay! That was terrific. Guys. Do I still get to sit next to you? Do I still get to sit next to you?
All right.
Because you have the candy.
Sorry, guys. Yeah. We're huggers, sorry. You have to be patient.
Oh, my God, I love it.
You still do?
Yeah, we do.
That was really a beautiful process and a testament to all of our hard work this year. Council member Beckmeyer just stepped away, but I guess my second action as mayor, this is a little unusual. We usually do our proclamations at the beginning of the meeting, and Sue would have been the one to do that, but she knows how much I love Lynn Adams and as my friend and my, we all love Lynn Adams, but maybe me a little bit more because you're my neighbor, too. And so I see you in a different light. And so I have the pleasure of presenting this proclamation and reading it to you. And so I have the pleasure of presenting this proclamation and reading it to you. So Lynn, if you would please come up to the podium. Oh, and actually, we were gonna show the video first, so you get to stand there and watch a little video that Sue and PCT put together and some of your clips over time.
Who is that? The City of Pacifica is proud to express gratitude to Lynn Adams for 24 years of dedicated service to our community as a volunteer and president of the Pacific Beach Coalition.
Helping us to recognize the value of our fishermen being stewards of the beach, stewards of the ocean.
The Pacific Beach Coalition is a community of earth heroes filled with passion for protecting and preserving the health of our ocean, beaches, wildlife, and coastal environment. The Beach Coalition began in 1997 with its very first Earth Day cleanup at Lindemar Beach. The effort spread, and soon monthly cleanups were happening at all of Pacifica's beaches. In 2002, Earth Hero Lynn Adams joined the group. Soon, the efforts expanded to removing litter from the streets before it could flow to the ocean. Community groups and businesses were engaged, empowered and inspired by Lynn Adams and the Beach Coalition. The community started to embrace the environment and their neighborhoods. Over the decades of Lynn's service, an army of passionate volunteers, including school groups and corporations, came from all over the Bay Area to clean our Pacifica beaches and protect the coastal environment. Monthly cleanups have now extended beyond Pacifica to Montero, Half Moon Bay, and Foster City. Over the past 24 years, Lynn Adams has inspired thousands to protect the ocean and care for the environment. Lynn is a powerful force for positive change. Her environmental advocacy inspires sustainable stewardship, community building, and citizen action among people of all ages throughout the Bay Area and beyond.
Wow, I'm telling you, if you have a dream and you work for that dream, anything is possible. This is possible.
The City of Pacifica and all its citizens thank and honor Lynn Adams for the love you've shared with our community and world. We honor you, and we will forever be grateful.
All right, there you go. So we'll let you talk in a minute, Lynn, but first I want to read the proclamation. And I want to thank Deirdre Martin for helping put this, these beautiful words together. So proclamation of the City of Pacifica in gratitude for Lynn Adams. Whereas Lynn Adams is retiring from a distinguished tenure of service to the Pacific Beach Coalition, having first volunteered in January 2002 and serving as President since 2007, during which she provided extraordinary leadership, vision, and commitment to protecting the ocean, coastal habitat, wildlife, and our community. And whereas, through Lynn's leadership, the Pacific Beach Coalition evolved from a small group of three volunteers, I see two of you, into a thriving regional nonprofit organization with an annual volunteer base of more than 10,000 participants, supporting over 13 stewardship sites and year-round programs, including Earth Day of Action, Coastal Cleanup Day, July 5th Cleanup, Habitat Restoration Events, and community and educational service activities across the Bay Area. And whereas, over the course of her presidency, Lynn helped mobilize an extraordinary 1,000, no, sorry, 190,651 volunteers, resulting in the removal of 415,580 pounds of trash, 600, I'm having trouble with my numbers tonight, 62,215 pounds of recyclables, wait, 407,150 pounds of green waste, and the collection and recycling of over, wait for it, 2.4 million cigarette butts. Preventing massive amounts of toxic debris from entering our coastal ecosystems. And whereas Lynn has led and expanded major habitat restoration initiatives, beginning with restoration efforts at Pacifica State Beach in Lindemar and extending more than 1.5 miles along the California Coastal Trail to Rockaway Beach, restoring dunes, removing invasive species, planting native vegetation, and supporting the return of pollinators and sensitive species such as the snowy plover. And whereas Lynn has been a driving force in environmental education, increasing the Coalition's field education programs from one to more than 10 per month, and inspiring thousands of local students, including nearly 5,000 recently, to understand climate impacts, marine ecosystems, and the importance of stewardship through the Earth Hero Honoree Pelican Assemblies. Whereas Lynn has developed and mentored an exceptional volunteer leadership corps, growing the organization's leadership team from 10 to more than 70 members, and empowering hundreds of site captains and junior captains who learn coordination, communication, and project management skills through the Coalition's youth and community programs, including Pacifica's first after-school Junior Ocean Stewards Program funded in part by the California Coastal Commission. I'm not done. Whereas, under her leadership, the Pacific Beach Coalition and its volunteers have consistently earned local, state, and national recognition, including honors from the U.S. Congress, California State Senate, California State Assembly, San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, the California Nonprofit of the Year Award, and numerous community partnership awards. And whereas, Lynn's impact extends far beyond any statistics, for she is widely celebrated as an environmental champion whose passion inspires action in others, friends, neighbors, students, and volunteers who often recall their first meeting with her by simply saying, "What a force." So true. And who credit her with motivating, educating, and empowering thousands of individuals to care for the earth. Whereas Lynn Adams' decades of devotion have not only strengthened Pacifica's coastal resilience and environmental health, but have also built a lasting culture of stewardship, community partnership, and shared responsibility that will benefit Pacifica and its coastline for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Christine Bowles, on behalf of the City Council and all its residents, do hereby recognize and honor Lynn Adams for her exceptional leadership, dedication, and unparalleled contributions to protecting and enhancing our ocean, coastal habitat, wildlife, and community. We extend our deepest gratitude and warmest wishes to Lynn as she retires from her role as President of the Beach Coalition and embarks on her next chapter. Her legacy of stewardship will endure for many, many years and generations to come. Done this 8th day of December 2025. And there's one more thing you don't get to talk yet. Actually, maybe a couple more things, sorry, Lynn. So there's one more thing to announce. So former Mayor Deirdre Martin and I, along with Councilmember Beckmeyer, former Mayor Beckmeyer, have been working on something with our staff. So I'm gonna ask everybody for a drum roll. Sarah's gonna pick up a slide. There we go. So we're still working with Caltrans to finalize the details, and an official vote needs to come before the council. But yes, we're gonna be naming these beautiful switchback trails that you've worked so hard on in your honor, the Lynn Adams Trail.
My, my, my. Do you think this could get bonus points for my family? Maybe they'll treat me nicer. Wow, this is amazing. I don't even know what to say. I'm glad I announced my retirement like a year ago so I could get all of these steps. I feel like I've been celebrating my retirement for a year already, and it's not even happened. But it's definitely been weighing on me for a long time. And it's a very, very challenging thing for me to step aside, and yet I think it's time for a new generation to come in. I think it's time to open the door for others to step up and let the chickens out of the, out of the, out of the, out of the pen, right? Like, let them run, let them fly. It's time for us to fly. And I'm here, not going anywhere, and I'll be walking that trail quite a bit. And I don't know, it's quite an honor. I will say that I'm so proud of the work to do that. It took us three years to get to the Rockaway Switchbacks, and every year we started over at Lindemar. And hundreds and hundreds of volunteers, 500, 700, 1,000 volunteers, weeding just to get to the top of the switch, of the Lindemar side. And then eventually, we got enough people, we started from both sides. And there were less weeds, and we got to go farther and farther. And now we have to be very careful weeding because of all the native plants. And I am proud that Greg is taking over. Michael Ayala has been doing it since 2008. He's been working every month on that, leading a group of people. I think the greatest thing is that we all have had a chance to do something to help other people and to help our city and our planet. And that's the greatest gift that I think we can all do, is that we can all do something, and we should start right here, right now, wherever we are, in the capacity that we can, and in the capacity that we have, and what speaks to us. And know that it's challenging, and it may not be like where you want it to be, but if you have that shining light up ahead, you're gonna be climbing to that light. And that's what it takes. You can't get there all the time tomorrow, but you can get there over 20 years. Thank you for this honor. Thank you all.
Thank you, Lynn. And we're not all done, so I think, I'll invite the council to make some comments, and then I have some cards from the public if anyone else would like to speak. For Lynn and her retirement, if you can fill out a card in the back, you've got some time. So who would like to go first?
Lynn, you know that when I have an opportunity, my first place to be is at?
Esplanade.
Esplanade. And I always think, like, what happened if Lynn wasn't doing what she's doing? What the city was gonna look like? And I really, really appreciate you for doing what you're doing, because we need more. So let's see if we can, I'm planning to do some on Hickey myself, so hopefully I get the equipment to do it. And I do really appreciate what you do. And we're here to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, you're so inspiring. I don't even, I have no words. I can't even, how you accomplished all that you did, but inspired everyone else to get on board. When I was doing research and looking around for clips and things for the video, I ran into a clip of Jim, wait, do I have the video? No, I don't have the video. I had the article. Win it, I forget which one. I can't remember which award it was. That's how many there are. I'm serious. But the quote that Jim said was that you changed Pacifica. You changed Pacifica. And I've heard this story many times, but, you know, looking at these numbers and looking at the various sites, how it started at Lindemar, and you guys started it.
Jim and Anna.
Thank you, Jim and Anna. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And you finished it, and it ain't done yet. But just the growth and the inspiration, the reason it grew is because of you, because of the inspiration. And you empowered everyone else to be inspiring, and that brings more people, and it grows and it grows. When you and I were speaking recently, and you said, yeah, they have 90 people show up at Foster City. Every time. That's incredible, incredible work. I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of what you've accomplished. And when I look at our beautiful city and I know where it came from, it's just, man, so inspiring. Thank you.
Lynn, you know, when you think about the ripples that go forth from you being the center, not a pebble in a pond and little waves going forth, you're an asteroid that came down. It made a tsunami, okay? Not only all the work that you and your group did, but that legacy of service that then extends on out into the community, it's part of what draws the community together, and then the goodness just goes forth from there. From the bottom of my heart, I just want to thank you very, very much for what a difference it is that you've made in all our lives and will continue to lead in all of our lives with that legacy that you're leaving behind. Thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Sister. Deirdre, thank you so much for coordinating all this. I see you. Lynn, I feel like over the years, you have been like the single most important person in our city that was like the center of service, which is everyone's saying that. But I remember I used to call you the blue-eyed Buddha. But you've brought so much, not only to, you know, everything everyone's already said, but for some meat personally, you have taught me what it means to be a leader, to be a fierce leader. You took on Taco Bell. And you don't hold back, and I think that's really important, and you show up all the time. And you have given me and my family an opportunity to honor, you know, my nephew by being able to clean up the accident site for 20 years. And there's no, there's no price tag for that. It's priceless. And so thank you. Thank you for meaning so much to me and to my family and to my community, and I'll see you on the switchbacks. That is the coolest thing ever.
So I first heard of the Pacific Beach Coalition in 2008. Bob and I had just bought a little vacant piece of land on Monterey Road, and there happened to be a car chassis overhanging the cliff bank. Somebody had had an accident who knows when, 20, 30 years prior, and it had been stripped bare, just the metal, but it was leaking oil into the creek. And we were like, what in the world are we gonna do with this? It happened to be Coastal Cleanup Day coming around, and I'm like, well, I don't know, but let's call the Pacific Beach Coalition and see if that's something they might be interested in. That was the first time we spoke. That was the first time we spoke. And you immediately got on the phone, found someone with a pickup truck with a wench and came right out and dragged that out of that bank. And I heard later that that just made that person's day. I thought, oh my God, I'm having you do so much work. But no, it's like, I don't know, you instill something, picking up one piece of trash, you feel like you're making a difference, right? The world and climate change and all the trash in the ocean seems so overwhelming, but you give us hope in that we can get out there and do a little good, right? And having heard the stories of how the Beach Coalition was founded with Jim and Anna, just like, what is all this trash? Who's going to do anything about it? Well, maybe I can, right? And that's how it started, just two or three people starting to pick things up. And you know what? The last trash there is on the beach, the last people pollute and leave their trash. So you've made such a difference and not just to our beaches and our ecosystems and think of all the plastics that could be, you know, in the bodies of the whales and the pelicans and all the wonderful creatures you celebrate, but it's not there here anyway. And I know, you know, even globally, people are looking at what you're doing. Your education materials go out, you know, way beyond Pacifica and the Bay Area. And I'm so impressed with what you've done this past year, right? It's because you are focused on making sure this wonderful organization that you have helped build up will not only survive, but again, thrive into the future. And to have seen that coming, to have been planning ahead, to have hired wonderful Patrick, who's here, Wave, a great environmentalist of his own right to help lead this organization. But really, you've built all these leaders, as we just read, you know, over 70 people coming to your meetings. The Christmas party the other night was fantastic because it is such a joy to be able to work and give back, working alongside you, working alongside these incredible people who really care about our planet and our ocean. And then, you know, I know it'll be hard for you to step aside. I know you're going to take a good vacation with your beautiful wife, Ellen, and have some very well-deserved rest, but I also know you're not going to stop. You're going to find other ways to volunteer because that is just who you are, right? And the good news is you won't have to do all the administration and the fundraising. You can just do the things that you really care about yourself. Yeah. So anyway, I'm going to take the public comment now and then after that, we'll take a picture with the proclamation. There's another gift for you in the back that I really encourage everybody before you leave to go sign your name for Lynn. It's a lovely photo of a pelican that Leo Leon took here on our beaches.
I'd like to just say that, you know, teamwork makes the dream work, right? You have to have a dream, then you have to get your team. And remember, everybody can be part of your team and when they're part of your team, they feel good and we feel connected. And that's, the name of the game is to be connected and to be, you know, everybody has their skill. My mother was a real, you know, 10 kids and she had us like, you know, clockwork, all doing the things that we were best at, right? And that was like really, we all were part of the team and that's what this is about. And I really pray and I dream about our team continuing to grow and to make a difference and to keep including new people in this dream. And, you know, it started out with getting community groups and that was my favorite thing, was just calling people, "Hey, Mary, what do you think about doing Lakeside Way?" And she was like, "Yeah." And she came and jumped in my arms the first time that she did it. And she came and jumped in my arms and said, "This was the most meaningful thing I've ever done." And it took me two years, maybe three, to get her to do it. And I knew that it would be a good thing. And so, really don't hesitate to call on people to help you. You know, you need a cup of sugar, you need some milk. Don't hesitate to call your neighbors. We're together, right? And this is the way it is. It's like we make a better planet by starting right here and being open to people. So thank you for this amazing honor, this award, and the Rockaway Switches are very, very special to me, so thank you.
Absolutely. So I have six cards. We'll start with Ron Makel, followed by Suzanne Moore and Deirdre Martin.
Yeah, Rockaway Beach. I don't know where to start. I can start with kind of the time when the baton for the leadership of the Beach Coalition was passed on from Jerry Flynn to Lynn. And I'm sure she remembers that. And that was a long time ago and somewhere along the line, I managed to get, you know, brought in into the fold there. And for a few years, I was a site captain at Rockaway. And I'll tell you though, it wasn't all, it wasn't easy because Lynn was a whip cracker, man. She was. I mean, she'd come by and check on the site captain and she'd say, "Well, how many cigarette butts did you get?" And I'd say, "Well, let's see." And I'd ask the other person and they'd say, "Well, 1,980." And she'd go, "1,980? That's not enough. I want 2,000." But any rate, it wasn't all funding games. It's hard work and she did a good job of getting people working, no question about it. The other part where she was really cracking the whip, there was a few years I was appointed to design the Earth Day mascot proclamations, you know? And that's when she really cracked the whip. And I still have some bumps on my back. Not really. But anyway, working with Lynn for the years that I did, I really appreciated and I actually knew her, she's been both a friend and, you know, a boss, really, in many ways a boss because she worked at the hospital where, for a while, where my wife worked. She sees my daughter who works at the bank from time to time and my daughter says, "I saw Lynn Adams today. She told me to say hi." And I say, "Yeah, tell her, tell her I said hi too." But she's a wonderful person, a hard worker, and I always appreciated her compassion for all creatures, great and small, no question about it. Thank you very much, Lynn.
Suzanne Moore, Deirdre Martin, and then Greg Finkelstein.
This is going to sound so repetitive, but you just got to put up with it, Lynn, okay? Every once in a while, a community is fortunate enough to have someone come out in true service, a person who is selfless, dedicated to a vision, stubborn for a cause, hardworking and inspires others. And when that person comes forward, a community can be transformed. And that has been Pacifica's fate since Lynn Adams stepped into leadership of the then Pacifica Beach Coalition. Since the coalition began, teams have collected tons of beach and creek waste and millions of cigarette butts, educated hundreds of Pacifica school kiddos to respect our beach and ocean, attracted hundreds of fellow volunteers, won recognition and awards, and spread the word for coastal stewardship. Lynn is one of a kind and she's guaranteed that the Pacific Beach Coalition will persist for years to come. You've done really well, Lynn. Thank you and your family for all your work.
Thank you, Suzanne. Former Mayor, Deirdre Martin, welcome.
Lynn, hello to those folks. I haven't seen you in a while. Lynn, you talked a little bit about teamwork. I just wanted to, I don't want to take all the credit, so a lot of this was not my idea. I just helped shepherd it through. So as you all know, Lynn has, and this city council has fostered this great community, so that's what it took to get a lot of this done. So thank you all and thank you all because it was not just me. The first time I met Lynn, actually, well, that I saw Lynn was at a city council meeting and I thought, oh my gosh, I got to meet that lady. She's freaking awesome. So then I saw her at the Chit Chat Cafe, like in a meeting, and I'm like waiting for her to get done, right? So I kind of like follow her outside and stalk her a little bit and I'm like, "Oh, hi, my name is..." And she's talking to me and she's picking up cigarette butts as we're talking and I'm like, "I got to start picking up cigarettes." So next thing you know, I'm the site captain at Esplanade, right? So and Lynn just kind of had a way of like making you do things without knowing it and next, you know. So next thing I know, my very first Earth Day here in Pacifica, I was in a drum circle with the mayor of Pacifica. That was Julie Lancelle at the time. This, again, was just the kind of community that you created, Lynn, right? But I just want to share a few heartfelt words with you, Lynn, all about someone who's changed my life, my friend, my mentor, Lynn Adams. She's spent decades giving everything she has to our coastline and inspiring thousands to love and protect it. What she created through the Pacific Beach Coalition is nothing short of remarkable, transforming a tiny group of volunteers into a region-wide movement of thousands, restoring our beaches and coastal habitats, educating our youth, inspiring people of all ages to step up and care for our planet. Her leadership has protected wildlife, strengthened our coastline, and created a culture of stewardship that'll last for generations. But beyond the incredible numbers and accomplishments, Lynn's changed people and I'm one of them. She's taught me how to lead, how to serve, and how to believe that one person can truly spark a movement. Her guidance and her honesty and her fierce dedication have shaped me in ways that I'm going to carry with me forever. So Lynn, thank you for being my teacher, my inspiration and my friend. And even as you step down as president, I'm so grateful that we're going to continue this journey together and I look forward to many more years of serving this community side by side.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Deirdre. So Gary Finkelstein, followed by Jim Fithian and Susan Miller.
For as long as I can remember, four or five years old, I've always wanted to do good things for the planet, animals in it. I think after undergrad and grad school, it was a daunting task to figure out how to make that something that is continuous in my life, not just a side project of volunteer, but a career. And you trusted me with so much and you have provided so many opportunities for me to be able to do what is most valuable to me. And I want you to know that I'm going to do my best to continue with what you've entrusted with me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Fithian. I don't always wear Pacific Beach Coalition.
Yes, you do.
I actually didn't. No, you always see me in it. I didn't think there was going to be a time for us to speak, so this, I didn't actually prepare anything. I speak so much in the Beach Coalition, people are probably tired of hearing me speak. But I want to tell you a couple of things about Lynn. First of all, we started the Beach Coalition 28 years ago at Lindemar and Penny Keating was the leader at that time and Anna Garcia, my wife, and myself and Paul Hurley were the people. Anna was the one that said, you know, "There's all this trash. What are we going to do about it? Why don't we just start picking it up?" And that's how it started. We didn't know it was going to be a movement and that's what I've credited. A lot of people have said this tonight. That's what I credit Lynn with, is turning this from just an idea we had, let's just do this on a, it was a Coastal Cleanup Day, maybe we'll do it again next month, 28 years ago, to a movement. And I think one of the most valuable things Lynn has done with this community, and people are trying to replicate it in other cities, is connect all of us. First of all, thank you to the city council. You can't, you can't do something like this without all this support. The police, the public works, all the different organizations. Lynn is a visionary and a visionary is able to see how you can connect all these people together. They have not replicated this in other cities, but they want us to help them learn how to do that. So I think that's one of the most valuable things that Lynn has done. And yes, Lynn has changed Pacifica. I used to make speeches about picking up trash. She said, "You know, Jim, it's not about picking up trash, it's about stopping litter where it begins." And you know what? We've done this for over a generation. I think as someone said, we have our junior site captains. We've done this for over a generation. Those kids that we have, the ones that are high school students, they don't litter like we used to litter. They pick up and that's because of Greg and all these assemblies and all the different work that people have done, so I know my time is up. Thank you so much. This has been a struggle getting Lynn to do this. When she first announced to Anna and I, when I had a phone call, I was thinking about doing this. Both of us just said, "Yes, Lynn, you have to retire. You can't be a visionary for this long and not burn out." And I'm so happy for Lynn and Ellen that they're going to take this vacation and for our new director, Patrick, who is going to take it. This is not tough. Think about those shoes to fill. This is not, but we have a great team. We have all your support. We have the community's support so we can do this. So Lynn, you did start a movement and you changed Pacifica and we all love you for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jim. Susan Miller, followed by Sue Degree, and that's the last card I have.
This will be short and sweet. I wasn't planning on speaking, Lynn, but I can't not speak. I just want to say that Lynn is heart, energy and love and a fierce-ass competitor at 2500 and Quirrell, and I plan on beating you very soon. She's also a dog lover and she is a connector. I've been here since 1985. These beaches were a mess when I came and it bothered me so much and I picked up trash. And really, for the last 40 years, especially the last 20, I've been saying, "Thank God for Lynn. Thank God for Lynn. Thank God for Lynn." And how to know that I'm not the only one picking up trash. I'm not the only one taking care of natives. She and I did a lot of work on the Switchbacks together. We did a lot of work at the Land Trust together. She got my husband out. That is no easy feat. And we've had a wonderful time together. Everyone said it way better than me, but I just want to tell you, I love you, I thank you, and every day the earth thanks you. Thank you, Lynn.
And Sue Degree?
I met Lynn twice. Once we were teachers in Burlingame many moons ago and I was impressed with Lynn's dedication to the youth and her profession, and she was a PE teacher. And then I came to live to Pacifica and I met Penny Keating and Jerry Flynn and their wonderful work and Anna and Jim constantly going on and on. And like Lynn said, it's the team for the dream. And what I also appreciated about Lynn was that she appreciated the fact that the Jim and the Anas and the Penny and Jerry Flynn were there, working super hard. And yes, Lynn has brought that foundation to a movement, which is awesome for sure. But what I wanted to highlight maybe to Lynn more and as to everybody is that when the young people out there, and this gentleman is an example for the park, he said he was in diapers. So how many young children are out there, really young, cleaning up and seeing cigarette butts? I think in their mind, they see how bad cigarettes are, which would translate to smoking. And so I think when the data shows that youth are slowing down in the cigarette, I think some of that comes from this kind of actual hands-on experiencing how bad a cigarette is and what it does to nature. And being out there cleaning up, you're with the ocean, you're with the sounds, you're with the wind and you're with fellow human beings. This makes you part of your person, yes, as adults, but maybe more so as young. So I would say what you've done for our future in young people, thank you. That's awesome.
We don't seem to have anyone on the phone right now. Give a few seconds for that. If anybody else wants to bring up a card or just come to the podium and give a card at the end. Oh, I see Ruby Maine coming up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bowles. Going to have to get used to saying that. Ruby Maine, on behalf of Assembly Member Berman, just wanted to say... just wanted to say a few words. Lynn, thank you so much for your service. I think when I, I'm also here as a Pacifica resident. When I say that I am from Pacifica, I think people think of two things, the Taco Bell or Lynn Adams. And I know that we formerly recognized you at the Earth Day Festival that we recently had in April. But this evening is really about celebrating your retirement. And I just want to speak, I was a student in those assemblies that we had in the Pacifica School District. And to be able to stand here and say thank you for all of your hard work is truly an honor. You were our 2024 nonprofit in our district for the State of California Assembly. And your work through the Pacific Beach Coalition will carry out through generations. So Lynn, thank you so much for everything that you do. And we look forward to celebrating you and hopefully a restful retirement.
Thank you, Ruby. I see Anthony Yoshida from Josh Becker's office.
Thank you, Mayor Bowles. Lynn, there's not really words that I could use to add on to all that's been said tonight. Over the last couple of years, I've given you countless certificates and resolutions, which are flashy, but I don't think you do it for, you know, the accolades. You do it because it's the right thing to do. And, you know, enough cannot be said about the impact you've made on the community. And just like Ruby, the first time I met you was also at a school assembly here in Pacifica. And I went out during school to do the beach cleanups. And I've gone to do cleanups now in my role, working for Senator Becker. So I appreciate everything you do. Thank you very much.
Anthony. Emily, just checking in one more time. With that, I'll close public comment. And we'd really like to take a picture. So if you don't mind coming up, Lynn, but also everyone from the Beach Coalition, everyone who's picked up a piece of trash. Come on up.
We'll fill in. We can do it.
Right? Yeah.
How are you doing?
We're almost done, yeah. So we're almost done. There are going to be treats in the back that you're all welcome to. Please stay and congratulate Lynn and celebrate with us on council. I did want to open the opportunity, if there's any council communications before anything critical that we need. It's on the agenda. I didn't write the agenda.
Let's go celebrate.
No, okay. And no staff communications, I'm told.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm going to use my gavel.
She's gabbling on the first day.
So if I can ask you all to just be quiet for one more second? We're going to adjourn the meeting. I'm going to let Mary speak about someone that we've lost today.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bowles. I want to adjourn the meeting in honor of Phyllis Morrow. Phyllis has been a longstanding community member and a member of my family. And we're very sad to learn that she has passed away. She had raised all these children here, David, Katie, Jason, Chris, Craig, Indra, their children, the children's children. Like, she's a, leaves quite the legacy. And we are going to miss her very much.
Thank you. And with that, the meeting is adjourned until January, when we meet again. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thanks for coming out.
Feliz Navidad.